As to convene the select board for us.
I think they'll have to nominate.
I'll nominate Ms. Hewens to acting chairman for the night.
Second.
Thank you. I'd call the meeting of the board, select board, to order on April 22nd, and the time is 7:09.
Welcome, Madam Vice Chair. Madam Chair, we'll just let you be the chairman tonight. Has a nice ring to it, anyway.
Thank you.
We did the pledge. Any public comment? I don't see the room crowded here. Todd Administrator and Finance Director, update. Elaine, you said that you didn't have anything for tonight?
No.
Okay. With the permission of the school, I'd like to go to the police department so that Chief Dufly can try to get home before midnight. Is that okay with everybody on the board?
Yeah.
Chief? How are you?
Good evening. Thank you. Thanks for putting me first. I'm just going to go through a little bit of our stats.
Sure.
During 2023, the Kava Police Stopman logged 1,414,908 calls for service, just slightly less than 2022, or about 41 calls per day, handled by 16 officers, two annual patrol officers, four dispatchers, and a part-time records clerk. A partial breakdown of those calls includes dealing with 108 domestic disturbances, serving 139 restraining orders or harassment orders, handling 249 vehicle crashes, affecting 518 motor vehicle stops for traffic violations, checking on 247 burglar alarms, and conducting background investigations related to 349 licenses to carry firearms, and finally completing 847 requests for records. We worked with our public safety partners, the fire department and EMS, to assist in slightly over 1,780 calls. Working alongside the Kava Police Union, we ran both the Kava Night Out event and another very successful toy drive this Christmas. Our school resource officer and other officers continue to work with the school department to ensure the safety of and help to educate our young people. Our partnership with the Plymouth County Outreach Project continues to provide follow-up after an overdose with an offer of immediate acceptance of a treatment program. This program offers one more approach in our fight against drugs, which also includes our investigative efforts to arrest those dealing drugs and educational efforts to guide our youth into making good life choices. This year, we responded to fewer overdoses than previous. Last March, we deployed our body, not this March of 2024, March of the last year, for last year, we deployed our body on cameras to all offices. The program has thus far been very successful. In November, we brought onboard a co-response counselor to work with our police officers to be able to provide better services at mental health calls. Unfortunately, she's chosen to take a job at a Braintree to move on to a better-paying job, so we've lost her, and in the process of getting another counselor onboard with us, that's a huge impact for this town, for the department, because it allows us to better offer services to people suffering from mental health crises, which is something that we are seeing an increase of throughout my career and especially in the past couple of years. And having someone like that onboard provides invaluable service, not just to the officers on scene, but to the people that we go to serve, so that we can make sure that they are getting the help they need. And if they need to be taken to the hospital, they have somebody in the capacity of a medical professional who can go to the hospital and talk to the doctors there about what they saw or unseen. Sometimes it's a big disconnect between what the police see unseen and what the doctors want to hear from us when we get there. But having that person in between makes that transition from the street to the hospital much smoother and much more productive. So, we're definitely working diligently on getting that program back in order. We've worked, our deputy chief's been working with the Department of Mental Health on a grant for the past two years of it. I think there's some very big disconnects in between the state giving out the money and the private companies that are providing the counselors, but we have to find a way through this. We may be next year talking to you about some ideas we have on doing it differently than through a grant. But it's a great program, and it's definitely providing much better service to our residents who are suffering mental health problems. The budget for FY25 includes all contractual increases for police and dispatch. This year, we saw two retirements from our full-time staff and have a potential for another three to four next year. We've hired three officers last year, starting with Chris Mahoney and two laterals, Christopher Foran and Mark Passionick, and we're still looking forward to fill another position. We put that on hold with the, with some of the budget issues that came up this year, but we are still looking to move forward with that at some point next year. We've got to maintain that, we've got to keep going on that, because as I said, next year we have at least three, possibly four retirements coming, and if we're not on top of that, we're going to be well behind the curve, and it's going to take a lot to catch up. When it takes a lot to catch up, we spend a lot more overtime, and we are less safe in that we have more, less officers doing more, working more, becoming tired. It's just not a good thing. We don't want to go down that road. On the operations side, you see an increase in our repair and maintenance of equipment, just to cover what we spend in fixing things that come up, little things, office equipment stuff that comes up, we have to fix. Under the telephone is an increase to compensate for just the price of telephone going up, telephone services going up. Computer software subscriptions, which is a breakout from our other purchase services, as we talked last year, we took, we broke that other purchase services line down into two different lines. Other purchase services in the, in FY25 and FY24 is just for the purchase of the, the lease of our tasers. Then we broke out from that line, a line called computer software subscriptions, and that is to cover the records management software costs, the PMAM software, which monitors and stores our policy procedures, police DTS, which is the system we use to call out details in overtime and also do detail billing, and several other small things, Comcast, all those things that fit under that. I have a complete breakdown if we need to go through that, but that, that has been increased again this year because we, because every year, the cost of IMC, which is the records management system, goes up by about 5%, and every year, several other things go up, the services that we purchase that go up.
Where are the body cameras?
They're under, I did not mention here, but they're under other purchase services.
Okay.
There's a line, other purchase services should be 13,600 this year, and it's going to go up next year because there's a slight increase.
Or so that's, that's for body cameras and tasers?
Nope, just tasers. Oh, body cameras are in the computer, the other one, computer server.
In the computer, okay.
Yes, I'm sorry. I heard you wrong, I apologize. Tasers are the, are the other purchase services, body cameras are in this one.
Okay.
Ammunition continues to go up, and we need to have a supply on hand to qualify all our offices every year. We qualify twice a year, or a couple of times a year at least, and the cost is just going up, so we have to get what we can, when we can get it. Dues and membership, that shows an increase to cover the costs of contractually required memberships for myself and the deputy chief, as well as the Mass Police Accreditation Committee, our membership into SEMLEC, which is Southeastern Mass Law Enforcement Council, that's where we get, we have offices that are on the SWAT team, the search and rescue team, the dive team, all the other 31 communities that contribute to that also contribute to offices, so that when we need something, we can call on them, and they come, and when they need something, the same thing. We used them a couple of years back when we had a couple of protests in town to be able to bring in considerably more offices than the town of Kava has at no cost of the town of Kava, so it's important to be part of that. It also covers the cost of the Greater Boston Police Council, which is Bayburn, that's a state bid thing, bid process, as well as a regional radio system that lets us be able to talk to other communities all the way up the whole North Shore, South Shore into the North Shore. There's a line called protective clothing, new hire PPE. So, last year, we had talked about moving, in the past, we always had a $10,000 line item that was under capital to purchase new equipment, and the services needed to bring a new officer onboard, we moved that to the operating budget, so it's, it's under that line. Not really sure why we're still calling to that, but that's where it's at. And last year, it was moved to, we put the $11,000 there. This year, because we think we're going to have to hire three officers, we added $5,000 to that, so you should see the number being 16,000 instead of 11,000. And again, the responsibility of preparing and expanding the budget for our police stopmen is one of my most important tasks. I take that responsibility very seriously, as evidenced by the past 10 fiscal years. And I'd like to thank you again for all your support and your trust in me as your police chief to do this, but most importantly, the support of our hard-working public safety, fire, police, EMS, everybody that's out there every day, keeping guys, keeping this town safe, keeping the residents and the visitors of this town safe. They do a fantastic job, and I am very fortunate. I'm an ordinary man that gets to work with extraordinary people, and we're very lucky to have the people we have in this town in public safety positions, they are, and I'm very fortunate to be able to work with them, so. That's my short presentation. I'm certainly happy to take any questions or any comments or anything.
Anyone on FinCom?
I have a question.
Tony?
The, the line you were just talking about, you increased it to 16,000 for you, protective clothing.
Yes.
So, if you don't use that, will you just carry it forward until you do hire somebody if you don't use it all?
So, unfortunately, this is an operating budget, so I can't, this is, this ends on June 30th. This is FY25's budget, so this would end on June 30th of 2026. It goes back into the general fund, and we'd have to ask for it again the next year.
It's a lot of revolving accounts.
So, you're just going to ask for it? You're going to ask for what you think you're going to use?
Yes.
Anyone else? Anyone in the room? Mr. Carter?
Just three questions, I think. Overtime, I see you've lowered that for fiscal 2025 to what you have in 2024, but it looks like you're at 323 right now.
Yeah.
So, so is there, is there a way of controlling that? You're going to do as best you can and get to the 320?
Well, as, as we mentioned before, I, every year, I do take that very seriously and do the best we can, but we, based on the staffing in our department and the level of work that we have to perform, a lot of it still has to be done on overtime because I just don't have the bodies to do it. So, to get that work done, we have to use overtime to do it. And I think I mentioned it last time, we increased this to 320 the year before from 265, where we had not changed in several years. It's very difficult, it's just, it's a number, you know what I mean? It's not a number that's, it's really based on a percentage change. I've got a great spreadsheet that breaks down the past five years of overtime by category and what we spent and the increases, and in meeting with Karen, our new finance director, she's very interested in using those numbers to come up with a percentage of what we should be looking at for overtime, so that we can better cost that. We do the best we can to keep it to that, but we have a lot of things that we have to do. We've talked about some other ideas, even with the school today, about how we can change that around a little bit to try to stay within that number.
Okay. Training, you've got 10 for fiscal 25, you had 10 for '24, but you're at 17 right now. Do you have any more? Is that, is this an unusual year for training, or are you done with any training expenses for the rest of the year?
No, we, we're not done, but a part of this is, that training line covers the cost of training, the cost of the course is not the overtime or the salary to fill it. And a part of that also includes paying for training for our dispatchers, which is reimbursable by State 901, so we usually get a part of this back, and we built it, we built it, I just submitted a reimbursement request for about $3,000 to them the other day, so some of this is coming back to us.
Mm-hmm.
So, that's why it's above right now, but it should even itself out before.
Reimbursements?
Yes.
And just the last question was on, on the dues and members, dues and members line item, you're at 15.5 right now. Is that done for the year, or could that go higher than that because you're trying to stay around the 15.4 line for next year?
Yes, so I, my response is not, I don't have it in front of me, but I believe we should be done for the year, yes. That was another line that, over the years, it has not, was not allowed to get increased, and I did, I broke that down by the years of what we spent and where we're going with it, so I think we're getting a lot closer to having that number down to what it is supposed to be. Those do, some of those memberships go up, and they have, but we're in a much better position as to understand where they are and what they are moving forward. You're welcome.
One question. What's the difference between weapons and firearms replacement?
So, this line, in here, weapons on this, the $2,500, we have that in there if we need to buy, purchase a weapon, if something breaks, we need to buy another one. And the firearms replacement in capital is, we purchased the weapons that we carry now back in 2013, and it's about a 10-year lifespan, and we're looking to replace all the weapons that we're carrying now. So, there's a line item in our, in our operating budget that covers anything that happens during the year. Sometimes, before, we had that line to get a new body, a new officer, we might have to buy a weapon as they came on, because we don't, we don't stock many weapons in our armory if something happens, but this, the capital request that you're talking about is a separate capital request to replace all the weapons based on the age of the current weapons.
Pat?
Hi, Chief.
You know, you hit the nail on the head when you talked about the three public safety departments,
yourself, fire, EMS. It just does a phenomenal job for the town. We've also got three chiefs and directors there that have track records with not only building budgets but administering budgets, so we're, we're very fortunate with, with all of that. But what I'd like to ask you is, what do you think are, were there any things that you think were relatively significant that you could not fit into this year's budget?
Well, yes. We, in this year's budget, originally, we had a new police officer coming on July 1st. Obviously, we were asked to work together with the town, as we always do, to come up with some cuts to, to balance the budget, and we agreed, we, we worked together to come up with moving the hiring date of that new officer from, from July 1 to January 1, saving a half a year's salary to get us in there. So, that's a, that's a big one. That's about $35,000 that would have, you know, been well-spent. And I think that working with our new finance director and working with our interim town administrator, we have some ideas on how to make that work, but we're going to have significant retirements next year, and some of those, I know one definite for the fall, possibly two. It's my opinion that we need to try to find some one-time money to start that hiring process sooner, because one of the biggest problems we've had over the past 11 years, the past 15 years, the past 22 years that I've been here, is we wait until somebody retires, and then we replace them. We came out of civil service to speed up that process, but we're missing the boat when we don't start the process before those people leave, because when they leave, there's a big gap that gets filled by overtime. It's just the way it is, and we need to compensate for that gap by bringing people in ahead of time, so that when the person retires, there's somebody there already.
You've, you've spoken to that before, but it's just, just reiterates my point of, you know, the, the way in which the chiefs work with the town and their abilities to do that, so we appreciate that. Thank you.
No, you're welcome. Thank you very much, and, and we appreciate the ability to work with the three public safety committees, with the school department, and with the town, with the board of selectmen, town administrator, to get, to get, accomplish these goals, right? Everybody recognizes that money's finite, and all this money comes out of your pockets, your wallets, you, you pay it in taxes, like I pay taxes where I live, right? We, we all recognize that, and there are certain things we have to accomplish, and we're going to have to spend money on, and we try to find the wisest way to do that, to working together, so that if one department absolutely needs something this year, then we can hold off on something, we, we all work together on that. And, and we're very fortunate, in my estimation, based on what I've seen at the different chiefs meetings that I attend and have attended over the past 11 years, the relationship between our public safety chiefs, the relationship between our public safety and the select board and the finance committee and the capital overview, I don't think is the same in every community, you know, not from what I hear. And I, you know, I'm basing that on what I hear from complaints from other chiefs, but we don't have the same complaints, so, very, very, we're very fortunate to be working together as a team, and I think that, like you said, our public safety departments do provide excellent service to the residents, you know, and they do so at a cost, but at a, at a very reasonable cost, I think.
Absolutely. Thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
Anyone else? I have a question. And I appreciate you trimmed down the overtime budget, so actually, it's two questions. Where do you think you'll close this year's budget? Do you think you'll come out relatively even? You're going to come out short? Is the projection short? And is the current budget you're proposing for FY25, is this, for lack of a better word, is this pie in the sky? Is this like, you know, the feel-good moment, we made these numbers this, but come next January, after this budget's been in effect for six months, there's no way in God's green earth that this is going to pan out? So, I guess, I'm trying to get to realism versus, you know, this is what we can do now to make it work, but realistically, this is not going to work, and then I'm trying to get a handle on where we are in that respect.
So, your first body question was, where are we going to be this fiscal year, right? We're going to be very close. Looking at the numbers I have right now, I think that we, we have to, we have some pools of money that we're going to have to move money from, as we always have for our senior officer pay, that's not a budgeted issue, that comes out of other compensated avenues, and I think that when we move that money, we'll probably be spot on or slightly over, but I, it's very hard to tell. The reason being is June is historically a, a lot of people save their vacation time until June and take it in June, and it's historically one of our highest overtime months, so I can look at what we have left for vacation days that could be filled, and if we have to fill all of those, yeah, then we're going to need to come back to look at some money. If we don't, then we won't, but it's, I can't tell you whether we're going to have to or not, because.
I'm not asking for a firm number. I'm just trying to get a sense of, of where this might be headed.
Right. It depends when it's taken off, but I think that, I feel we're in pretty good shape, and I would, I don't want to, I don't want to jinx myself, but I think we're going to come in either right on budget or slightly over.
Everybody heard that, we're going to hold him to that?
Sure, it's all right. And, and as far as next year's budget, I certainly would not sit here and tell you that this is a fake budget or that we're, that we're fudging the numbers or anything, but historically, we always have. Overtime has been overtime. We put that number down, we try the best we can, but we can't control all the things that come up in a year that we have to do, that we have to use overtime for. And I'll give you, for instance, you know, I mean, there's several times, we just had one the other day where we get a probation warrant sent from court on a Friday afternoon that we have to go arrest somebody on, and guess what? They don't want to spend the weekend in jail, so they go to the hospital, and that means we can't turn over the sheriff's department, I have to have a police officer there watching them the entire weekend on overtime, and that could be $8,000, $10,000 in a heartbeat, and there's nothing I can do to change it. There's no judge that can undo it, there's, I could unarrest them, and we could take the chance on that, but if we do that and it goes sideways, the lawsuit's going to be incredible, so we have to do those things, and we can't predict them, we can't, you know, I, I wish we could get the courts to work with this a little bit instead of waiting till Friday at 3:30 when they decide to put out, instead of, could you try in the morning? We could just go get them and get them to court, that'd be a lot better, but those things happen on a regular basis, and you can't, I mean, I, we express our displeasure all the time to the courts about it, and it doesn't change one iota, it's just the way the system works, but we have a responsibility to the citizens of the town to do the job, and we, and we do it. So, it costs money like that, and I can't, you know, there's no, no way to budget for that, there's no way to predict it.
Right.
Sometimes it happens a lot, sometimes it doesn't.
Please, I'm not trying to say that you, I'm not trying to say you fudge the budget, don't misunderstand.
No, no, I know.
Please. I, I think that, that, I'm more concerned with these budgets being presented realistically, so that we have a better handle on what's going to happen six, eight, 10, 12 months from now. And, and I just, and, and I know that overtime, we've had this conversation every year for five years, I know overtime is a huge problem for the police department, it's a huge expense, and if they hired eight more guys, there'd still be overtime. That's just the way it is. So, I wanted to make sure that you're comfortable with these numbers and you're comfortable with this budget, and, and if we come up a little short, we come up a little short. It wouldn't be the first time, this happened last year and the year before, not crazy numbers, but nonetheless, and, and I just wanted to, that's why I wanted to ask the question. I certainly have no, no disparagement toward your ability to put together a budget, I just, I just want to make sure that you're comfortable with these numbers, Chief.
Well, I apologize, and I didn't take it that way. I think that, why am I comfortable with the numbers that we have today, is many of the numbers are based on a, on a contract, and we know what it's going to be, right? Salaries, we know what it's going to be. Overtime, we never really know what it's going to be, and I've explained it numerous times as to why it goes that way, but why I'm comfortable with it is because of the people in this room, because we work through this every year. We know it's, we understand it as a problem, you know what I mean? We, we don't minimize that, we just face it head-on and we move on with it. And as your chief, when I took over as your chief, I, I, the board that hired me, I told them that I was not here to save your money, I'm here to spend your money wisely and give you the best police service you can for the money. I believe we've done a very good job of that, and I believe because we've done a very, very good job of that, people trust us, and we continue to do what we're doing.
Right. Your record stands.
I can't, I can't possibly tell you that I'm going to give you money back. It'd be great if we could, but we, we can't. We have to run the department. If we look back at the 2018 strategic plan that was prepared by MRI, we talked about a lot of different points in there, a new station, coming out of civil service, better policy procedures, a deputy chief, and an increase in staffing. Out of that plan that we put in place in 2018, we've accomplished all of those goals except the increase in staffing. The increase in staffing is how we're going to get that number, we're never going to reduce that number, we're going to get that number more in line with, more in line with where we'd like it to be, I guess, than we are now because we'd have those officers out on the road. And again, I, I don't speak publicly about the number of offices I put on the road or our plans.
Nor do I want you to do that, no.
For a lot of different reasons, mostly security-wise, that we don't want to put that out there, but we definitely, the plan that we, we did in 2018 calls for us to be at between 20 and 22 offices, and we're not there. When we get there, we'll be a lot, in a lot better position to better understand where overtime's going to go and deal with it.
Okay.
But I am comfortable with the budget we're presenting to you, and I'm comfortable because I put the numbers on paper for you, and I also know that we've always, always worked together to make it work, and I know that we always will next year as well, if that makes sense.
Any other questions on the budget? And FinCom's going to hold off on this vote like we've done all the other ones until Monday night, when we have Elaine and Karen, and then we're going over revenue and the budget as in entirety. Obviously, capital outlays invited, and then Tuesday night, we get to sit and do it all over again with the select board, except I can't sit here, I have to sit over there. Beth, I'm going to turn it over to you for the capital outlay portion of this, if you'd like it.
Sure. Thanks for coming and going over this with us. So, we got the new list tonight, Elaine, thank you. So, I noticed the only thing that's changed so far is the replacement admin cruiser.
Yes.
Does that open it up?
Yes.
Bump out?
Yep.
Okay. Do you guys, we have heard about the other two, but do you have any questions on them?
I did. Sure. So, I noticed that the last two meetings, the one in January and the one in February, the cruiser replacements was at 150,000, but tonight it's at 180,000.
Yes.
Can you explain? Is that still for two?
Yes, so, yeah, they have it explained. So, one of the things we've done over the past 11 years as well is, we have a cruiser replacement program for our patrol cruises, we have brand-new cruises that go on the road that respond to emergencies, and we've worked that plan very well over the past 15, 17 years. It has a cruiser assigned to every police officer, and we've saved a considerable amount of money in repairs, but we have their equipment all in one car ready to go, and it works very well. And we, and I, it's my belief that we need the best cruises on the, on the front line to do that. We've also, over the past 11 years, worked to use money to purchase used cruises for positions like myself, the deputy chief, the detective sergeants, the stuff that is not, we still respond, but we don't, we're not on the road every day doing that, so we've been able to take some money and, and buy, find used cars that make, make more sense. So, in this year's budget, we put in 150,000 to buy two new mock cruises, to replace mock cruises, 50,000 in admin costs. Originally, that would be to buy one brand-new admin cruiser, but last year, we were able to use the money in that to buy two used cars that, that fit the bill. So, the plan was to try to do the same thing, buy two mock cruises and use that money in the $50,000 pot to buy. in the $50,000 pot to buy two used cars to replace our detective's car and our admin sergeant's car, which are both 2013 cars, used cars that we purchased at the time for $2,500. So we bought two used police cars with the lights in them, with everything in them, for $2,500, and we've used them for the past six years. So we've got a lot of value out of that, and we'd like to continue with that. When we talked about how can we shrink the capital requests for this year, we talked about where can we cut and what can we do? And it was agreed, we had, you know, went back and forth, like we always do with Fire, EMS, everybody who's getting capital programs, the school included. And we came up with if we cut back, took the $50,000 off, but put some back into that line for 150, that would let us still get those two used cruisers and one mock car. So we reduced the number of marked cars by one, but I still need to replace those two used, the used cars we had from before, hopefully with two more newer used cars. And then we left the firearms in place.
Makes sense.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else have more questions for capital? Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Chief. Well, thanks for your time tonight, and you guys have a difficult job ahead, but I'm sure you'll do it well, and everything will be great for July 1. So thank you. Thanks for your time again.
Thanks, Chief. I appreciate it. With everyone's permission, I'd like to take a five-minute recess. I have a thought. I think we have a way of making these work. So is that all right with everybody? Can we take a five-minute recess, Jason? Okay. We took a quick recess because we were trying to figure out how to use these new computer screens that are hanging on the wall. So we've got that fixed now. So now we welcome the school department. Scott Neef, Ron Griffin, welcome.
Good evening. Thanks for having us this evening.
Thank you.
Hey, everyone. Thank you. Hi. My name is Ron Griffin, I'm the business manager with the school department.
You turn his mic up a little bit, Jason.
I can just get closer. Sorry. I lean in.
Just for all the folks at home.
Is that better? There we are.
Thank you.
Hi, everyone. Ron Griffin, I'm the business manager with the school department. Tonight, I'm going to share with you an overview of the school department's FY '25 budget. Before we get started, a couple of caveats that are important to keep in mind. What you're seeing tonight is a summary of materials that the school committee has seen as of April 1st. I mention that because I realize FY '25 has been a really challenging budget development cycle for us, and that there's lots of moving parts at any given time. So between April 1st and, what are we, on the 22nd, I'm sure there's already different iterations of revenue projections and those sorts of things. The governor's budget's now been updated with the House Ways and Means, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. What you're seeing today is the April 1st materials that the school committee has already reviewed. And so that's what you see today, both in revenue and expenses.
So this will be what they're getting Monday night, a week from tonight?
No.
Might be different.
It may be different, given the changes that we've seen for the past couple of weeks. In a typical year, though, it's usually lockstep by this point in the year. We already have a budget, we've got revenue, but it's been an unusual year, so I just wanted to flag that for you, that the materials may ultimately change for the 29th, given the movement that we've seen over the past few weeks.
That'd be the state aid part of it would change.
Correct. Ultimately, your total revenue cost. Yeah.
Thank you.
So before we get started, a quick summary of what you're going to see today. You know, we'll spend the majority of our time on two, three, and four. We'll talk about expenses and revenue. That's the meat and potatoes, obviously. And as I mentioned earlier, this has been a challenging fiscal year, so we'll spend some time talking about the sort of multifaceted approach that the school committee sort of put together to ultimately balance the budget. And of course, we'll end with next steps. You know, I share this slide every time I talk about school budgets. I've been doing it now for, gosh, a lot of years. And I know that one, one of the things that can often happen, we're talking about budgets in general, is you can get lost in the numbers and forget that these numbers sort of ultimately represent the priorities of a community, right? Thinking about, you know, the percentages, or the formula, or the increases, whatever it might be. The cost of education is a representation of the community's priorities. And so we have really three priorities when we think about developing our budget, and our school committee has been going over our budget now for, gosh, several months in different durations, you know, in great detail and great length. The first is just maintaining services for all students, obviously. The second, though, is making sure that we set our priorities straight when it comes to our educational blueprint. You've got a link there. I know our time today is limited, but I want to underscore that's an important part of who we are.
And I'll just touch on that briefly. I didn't formally introduce myself. Scott Neef, Superintendent of Carver Public Schools. And the educational blueprint outlines, you know, our priorities for what we want to do and the services we want to provide for students. And basically, there's four key points there. The links there, you can look at it in more detail for those who have a copy of the, this presentation. But what the four priorities are, is the first one is support safe schools, which is really about physical safety, but it's also about social, emotional wellness, and the safety of all of our students in all aspects of being in school, and all the things that go towards the concept of providing safe and supportive environments for our students. The second is what we call enhancing teaching and learning. There's all kinds of things about that. That's the, that's, that's about what we do. We teach kids. So what are we going to do to support our students in enhancing their opportunities they have in our school system? And it actually ties in, part of that, which I'll focus on briefly, ties in this kind of continually in the Commonwealth with middle-high school pathways. So part of our enhancing teaching and learning over the last several years, the community's been very supportive, as has the state, in terms of developing what we call our pathways programs. We have seven pathways to middle-high school, manufacturing, engineering, technology, visual performing arts, environmental and agricultural sciences, culinary hospitality, computer science, health and wellness, and a biotech pathway. And the concept of this path, these pathways is to give students the opportunity to explore career fields after high school. Those students may go on to a four-year school, a two-year school, but we also want them prepared to go into the workforce and to have a start in one of those fields. And we identified those fields based on our work through a group called Mass Hire, and identifying what are the regional needs in Southeastern Massachusetts. And that's how we identified those concepts. And we have been identified as a leader in pathways in the state. It's actually an initiative that the, the state is supporting and pushing across the Commonwealth. And as I think many people know, just a couple of weeks ago, Moore Healy came, as did the Commissioner of Education, as did the Commissioner Fidesi, Pat Tutwiler, and Russell Johnston came to Carver to announce the school districts that were going to be having pathways or new pathways programs next year across the state. But they came to Carver because they identify us as a leader in this kind of innovative approach towards education. So that all falls under that kind of enhancing teaching and learning. Our third core objective under this educational blueprint is making strong connections and partnerships within the community, and, and working effectively with all of our community partners. And the fourth one is what we call leveraging leadership policy and funding. And ultimately, the concept there is, as the chief referenced, as the chief referenced, we realize that there's only so many dollars that are available for the entire community of Carver. And we want to be partners in that process and how to best allocate those dollars. And we want to be thoughtful about that, so much so that we actually put it into our kind of vision document that we need to be thoughtful about that in terms of how we're spending the taxpayers' dollars within Carver. So that's kind of a big-picture overview of our kind of four, what we call core rocks or core pieces of our vision as a, as a school district.
Absolutely. The only thing I would just add is that, you know, as we think about developing the budget, and we've been working with the school committee for a number of months now, as we go line by line and account by account, we recognize times are tight, we have those conversations about, hey, you know, what are our actual costs in this area? Is there a way to get tighter here so that we can invest money in the pathways or invest money in, you know, reading, students for reading, those sorts of things? So we try to keep an eye to the educational blueprint and pathways as a priority as we do budget development and as we maintain the budget each month when we go over our actuals. So 10,000-foot summary, again, you know, I just underscore what the chief had mentioned and what Superintendent Neef mentioned. This budget is a collaborative effort. It's something that we're proud of in terms of the work that we do with our teachers and our school leaders, our school committee certainly as a, you know, community leader in that, but also our entire town. And I've worked in a number of different communities, and I just think we're fortunate to have a community that has supported education the way that Carver does, as Mr., you know, Superintendent Neef mentioned. We have taken this opportunity over the past few years to really become a leader in some important areas in education in the Commonwealth, and that can't happen without the community support that we receive. So we thank you for that collaboration, for that support. We know this is a collaborative effort. The two components that you'll see is of high value when it comes to FY '25. The revenue reflects draft six. I know the town has had a number of drafts on revenues. You'll see this reflects draft six. Some key data that's outstanding, as Mr. Jermaine mentioned, state budget not yet finalized, obviously, insurance estimates are currently being developed. And expenses, we recognize being a tight year, we've tightened a lot of our expenses, taking a hard look at our actuals, taking a look at our year-to-date's, as well as included some modest reductions in services ultimately. And that's primarily shedding payroll to two FTEs. We'll talk more about that as the presentation continues and dig into that a little bit deeper. But for now, we'll give you sort of a high view of expenses that you see in the school department. So looking ahead to FY '25, your total projected operating cost is the better part of $26.5 million. One of the things we say a lot when we're talking about our total operating costs is that the large majority of what we do is we're a people business. We're in the people business because we have, you know, we employ big people to educate little people. And so 80% of our total costs are people, they're staff, right? The rest is broken up into some contract services and tuitions for things like out-of-district special education kiddos, which we'll get into a little bit, supplies, materials, and so on. I want to name for you that in FY '25, we're seeing a spike in our overall costs, the better part of 7.7% on '24. That's really substantial, and that's not typical. Our goal, as we looked at our operating costs, to bring that back to about 7% overall, which again, is still a large increase that's atypical for us. But in order to do that, we've got to reduce some of our expenses, as well as reduce some of our staffing. Big picture, as I mentioned earlier, we recognize that this is a collaborative effort to create a budget for the school department's operating. We recognize that this year is a little bit unusual, so I want to spend a few minutes to talk about why that is for FY '25. What you see on this slide on the right is just a graphic representation of special education out-of-district tuitions. And if you take nothing else from our conversation today, this is really the big takeaway for '25. It's frankly the story for '24 as well in terms of our actuals, but in terms of what we look at for expenses going forward, the major lion's share of your increase falls in special education for special education tuitions. I know we've got a big group here today, so I want to be cognizant that our school committee spends a lot of time in this. I know you don't. I might take a minute, if I can, just to explain a little bit about that, 10,000-foot view, but feel free to stop me and like ask to drill down a little bit further. Looking at the Commonwealth in general, when you've got a kiddo who has disabilities, typically when those disabilities are identified, they find ways within the school department to provide those services. It might be in a classroom, it might be with a special education teacher, it might be with a specialized staff member that we have on staff. However, ultimately, those services are not sufficient to meet that kiddo's need to help them make adequate progress in the least restrictive environment. What ends up happening is school departments typically work together, they do what's called a collaborative, they all pool some resources and say, hey, look, let's pool some resources and have a classroom at an alternative location where a kiddo can go and get those specialized services. That's especially true if a district might have only one kiddo with a particular disability, they work with a lot of districts around the area, pool their resources to be efficient with the funding, so that we can still provide that kiddo what they need, but do in a way that's considered of the taxpayers, not just in your community, but in all the surrounding communities. So think of that as like the next level escalation. If however, at that collaborative, the students' needs still can't be met, that disability is still really significant, ultimately, students would then go on to these highly specialized schools. The Commonwealth has a number of these highly specialized schools, they do a wide range of services. Those specialized schools are quite expensive. And what happened here, what you see in this graph, is really two factors here in the Carver schools in '24 going into '25. One is the number of those kiddos have increased. That is, we have more kiddos than what we typically have had that require that third tier, that really significant intervention, that really significant service. The second is that the state, who approves these costs, approved a pretty substantial increase in just the tuition themselves, the better part of 14% this year on those tuitions per tuition. To give you a scale of this work, and again, I know we spent a lot of time on it with school committee, but you can have a, a single student on one of these tuitions cost the better part of a quarter million dollars a year to get highly specialized services. That doesn't include the specialized transportation that gets them from their home here in Carver over to that place, which can sometimes include a wheelchair vehicle and specialized transportation needs. I say all that just to give you a flavor of this and to hearken back to the fact that when we're building a budget and we're thinking about the dollars and cents, ultimately, especially in this case, it really just represents, in this case, kiddos. That said, this is an atypical pattern. I can't promise you that it does change, but typically, communities don't just keep going up. What usually happens, you've got one of these spikes, they happen every six to eight years, and they sort of level out. So while this is an atypical pattern for you, it's one that's really jamming you up in terms of the financials, increasing your overall cost of the school department. That's a lot of information. I'm sorry I went too, maybe too deep on special education. Questions on that bit of it?
Does, I'm-
Tony?
If we, I know we are school choice, so if we have a special ed student who comes from another town and then has to be elevated to this, who's paying for that? Is it still Carver?
It's a, it's a great question. I'll give you like a 10,000-foot view, we can drill down. The short answer is, there's actually a formula that the state uses to reimburse the school department for those costs. And that happens, that's actually part of your operating budget here. So if a kiddo comes from a different town and school choice, what ends up happening is we take a look at what those students' needs are, we meet their needs, just like we would any other kid, treat every kid the same as you want to have your kid be treated, right? But then those costs, we send over to the state and we say, hey, look, this kid is school choice, these are the additional costs for that. State says, thanks, and they bill the town that the kid comes from, and they send us some funding in reimbursement. It happens a year in arrears, but you're always getting that reimbursement. That's when we think about school choice, we think about the operating budget number as what I call standard school choice, not special education. It's called sped increments, the official like regulation word. But then we have sped increment, that's the additional funding that comes that just offsets the cost of a special education kiddo. It's a super good question. Do you want to add anything to that? That's a super good question.
But it does it next year for this year?
It's a year in arrears.
That's awesome.
Yeah. So we front it, which is, which is a bit of a challenge, but because of that cycle of like Fidesi has to approve it all, and the bill's got to go to that town, and that town's got to approve it too, that money comes back to us a year in arrears.
Kat?
No, just, as, as I remember from special education, is, is a big part of what the No, just, as I remember from special education, is a big part of what the school system does, it's an important part of what the school system does, but you also have no choice. There is, students need certain services and attention, they must be provided. And that's what, that's what it comes down to.
1972 Individual with Disabilities Education Act is sort of guides a lot of that work, and the Massachusetts Commonwealth regulations spin off of that federal law. Anyway, if you have other questions on that, and you think about it, pin back, it's the sort of high level. So with that said, that's the, the big picture when we think about the increase in expense here in our school department. I want to take a couple minutes and spend some time on the revenue projection. I know this group generally lives and breathes revenue, so I won't spend too much time on it, but here's your big picture, right? Using the current community practice, the district's, you know, projected appropriation is just under 24.2 million, that was as of April 1. Takes into account all of your local receipts and revenues, backs out all of your shared costs, and those shared costs are like a local decision, local policy stance on those things, and then splits it accordingly, right? That said, you know, I want to just name that we're continuing to look forward to our work with the Newtown Administrator, we've already had some great work with Karen, our current new finance director, just continue to update our financial policies to meet our needs, to meet the community's needs as well. One big component of revenue for schools, not just here in Carver, but everywhere, is Chapter 70. Again, 10,000-foot view, Chapter 70 is the law that essentially guides how the state provides funding for school departments, Carver and every other school department. I mention this because we have a, we're fortunate to have a large majority of our elected and appointed officials in the community here in this, you know, one space. It's a point of advocacy that the school committee has done really great work on, sort of advocating to the state to help improve the way Chapter 70 supports school departments, school districts around the state. And I'd ask that all of you join them in that advocacy. If you take a look here in this chart, up by there on the upper right-hand corner, what ended up happening recently, over the past couple of years, is the state passed this thing, it's called the Student Opportunity Act. It is a great step forward in the Commonwealth to help better fund school districts across the state. One of the challenges with that particular act and the way it's being implemented is that there are a number of school districts, about three-quarters, that are only receiving, give or take 3%, 3% or less, of an increase to their state aid. Carver receives less than 1% of an increase in Chapter 70. Why that's important is because any additional increase beyond less than 1% is borne by your local tax base. So every year, Chapter 70 doesn't keep up with just basic inflation, it means the cost of education falls on your community. And while I'm not a taxpayer here in Carver, I'm a taxpayer down the road, in the next town over, that's important. And it's not anyone's fault, that was just that the creators of SOA, Student Opportunity Act, just didn't give a lot of thought to this like caveat, to this idea of like inflation outpacing it, right? And so, anyway, I mention this as more of a point of advocacy, if you're interested in sort of supporting this continued advocacy, joining the school committee in their effort to just help educate our state leaders in how the impact of their law is landing in communities like Carver and the better part of three-fourths of the communities around the Commonwealth, we would encourage you and support your, your support of us.
I personally think the state people know exactly what they're doing, and I think they know exactly where they want to put the money. And it isn't in towns like Carver, it's in the big cities. This $30 a kid thing is criminal, is what it boils down to. With the increased costs, nobody's keeping up with 2.5%. This is nuts crazy. And I got something from the MMA, they're talking, I guess the governor's budget was $100 a kid minimum? They talked about that on Chapter 70, but of course, that was her budget, and that would never fly through by the time it went through the state with the House and Congress. But I guess she reached for the sky and, you know, if she gets, settles down with $50 a kid, you know, it's still criminal if you ask me. Because it's just, they want you to do more and more and more. Sped's a great example, where we, like Pat said, we don't have a choice. And oh, by the way, it's an unfunded mandate, you're on your own.
A little bit, yeah.
Best of luck. And that has a ridiculous impact. And I have more questions for you once you get going a little further.
Anyway, I don't mean to get too far off on that, but I just wanted to underscore that that is an important component to our total funding, to the community's total funding, but won't be keeping up with inflation currently, and we're hopeful that our advocacy is heard at Beacon Hill. So you've heard a little bit about expenses, a little about revenue, I want to spend the majority of our time talking about how we balance this budget.
Can I back up then for a second?
Oh, sure, sure.
If you don't mind, Ron. I'm going to ask John Carter. Correct me if I'm wrong, John, last year, when the health got moved above the line, I thought I saw the school number at like 66%. And the town was at 34% because we had moved these expenses, these shared costs above the line. Am I right there?
I think so. I was wondering the same.
And I'm looking at these numbers today, and I see that we still have the health and stuff above the line, but I'm seeing 68.4% and I'm seeing 30, without my glasses.
31.6.
Thank you. 31.6%. Where did those, where did those numbers change from? Where did those percentages change from? Was, was that something that the select board decided to do with the schools, or was that something that the school committee decided to try to do, or did finance come out with this, or? Unless I'm terribly wrong, you got three people here saying that last year's split was 66%, 34%. And now we're looking at 68, 30, and 31, so I'm kind of confused.
I don't believe it was 66, 34. I believe it was 67, something, 73, we'll get into 1%, but I don't believe it was 66.34. I think that's totally accurate. I mean, we can, we can double-check that number.
No big deal.
But I don't believe it was 66, 34.
Well, I'm, I'm almost certain it was a 66 number, but it might have been 66.9, but I thought it was 67.
I think that's close. I think what they're using this year is, sorry, what they're using this year is closer to what they used last year, if I recall, I'm going by memory. But the big question is why? Well, why would health insurance get above the line when it is a direct cost by department? And historically, we didn't do it in 20 years, and it looks like in '23, it happened, I think, because the records are just hard to read, get through. And I, my personal feeling is we should at least note in these years what the true split is with, historically, you know, whether it's a, another column onto a spreadsheet or something. I just, no one knows why it was moved above the line.
Right, well, it was moved above the line because I believe the former finance director, and I think Ron, I think they sat down and figured that this was a common cost in the town. I'm not finding fault with it, I don't agree with it, but I'm not finding fault with it. Going back to the percentages.
And I, I think, but I think the theory on that a little bit too, was that was a common practice by many municipalities throughout the state of Massachusetts. Doesn't mean Carver should do it, but I think that that was considered to be a common practice, and that Carver's practice of splitting it out was actually uncommon. And so the people who came into these roles, Ron, Moonland, said, our experience has been, and the common practice of many municipalities, is that that is considered a shared cost that would be above the line. And so that, and then they looked at that, and they changed the split, because I, again, I don't want, it's getting into quoting numbers, when the number was above the line, I think the split was 71, 6, 71, 29, or 70.8.
It was actually 70 and change.
Yeah, 70.8, Fan, 6, 70.
And then, and then O and M, there was some grounds maintenance and so forth that we did, that we took away from the schools, and that brought us down to the school being like 69.85 or something. So it got it under the magic 70% number. And then moving the health insurance dropped it even more. And now I see we're creeping back up into the 68, but go ahead, Ron.
If I could just, if you don't mind just adding, I would just say, I think one of the things that I've heard, that I was really appreciative of with Ms. Preville and just our department chairs the other day, is that I think this is an opportunity going forward to figure out something that makes sense. I think what I hear, you know, I'm relatively new to Carver, and one of the things I hear is, we don't have a plan as a community on this, and we just need a plan. And I'm agnostic, my job is just to be a custodian of your funds and to help you understand how you're using it in the schools. It doesn't matter to me if you want to have your insurance accounted, accounted for in the department or accounted for in a shared cost, so long as in the end, is it sufficient appropriation to pay for that insurance?
Right.
And pay for the pencils and pay for the teachers. This is just an accounting exercise. That said, I do think it'd be beneficial, and I'm hopeful, that your Newtown Administrator will work with us collaboratively and work with Ms. Preville collaboratively, to just build that plan going forward, whatever it is you want to be.
And I certainly agree with you.
And I absolutely agree with you. In fact, I've mentioned it to, I've mentioned it to John Carter, I think I've mentioned it to Mark Townsend, I know I said something to Elaine, I mentioned it to the members of this committee here. I think that starting July 1st, we, we get hung up on the percentages.
Yeah.
And that's just the way it is. But given the fact that the school is better than two-thirds of the revenue of the town of Carver, the schools are better than two-thirds. So I think going forward, it's vital that we have a group, which involves the school, both of you, a couple of members of the select board, we don't want a quorum, so only two, a couple members of FinCom, a couple members, one or two members of other committees in the town, because they impact also CONCOM Planning Board, maybe even Board of Health. And look at, and obviously, the TA and the finance director. And it's a working group, so we're not going to have, you don't have to have agenda meetings, it's a working group. And we need to look at sustainability going forward, and we should look at a five-year sustainability plan going forward. Because if we're not careful, my fear is, is that next year, we're going to mirror Hanover with a $4.5 million deficit, or another town with a million-dollar shortfall, like Hanson had a couple of years ago, $800,000 override on their budget, just for the operating budget. And, and I'd hate to see that happen here if we can get in front of it. And I think that, obviously, there's going to be some pain involved in getting in front of it, because you're going to have to have very realistic numbers. And, and we're not asking the school to carry that brunt, and I know the school's not asking the town to carry that. It's got to be a collaborative effort to make it work, so that, you know, everybody hurts but a little bit, instead of somebody hurting a lot and somebody not hurting at all. But I think sustainability going forward has never been more important than it is now in this particular economy, given the fact that so many cities and towns are now trying to pass overrides.
It's challenging. I'd add just one.
Just by two cents.
I'd add just one other cent if I can, not even two cents, just one cent on that. Again, I've worked in a few other communities, and one of the beauties that we have here is that, you know, as the chief mentioned, we've got a group of leadership that works really well together. We were just here this afternoon, working on capital and working together, and I've been in communities where there's a fight over the money all the time, and they're at each other's throats, and you've got local politicians saying, these people are overfunded and we should take money from them, and you've got departments saying, I can only think about my thing. Carver's fortunate to have a group of leaders who care about the big picture, and so I would just say, what you've got in front of you here for this revenue projection is locally decided. There's no law that says this is how it has to be. You can make it how you need it to be with the expectation that you want to fund all the services of your community, because you need teachers and firemen, and you need policemen, just like you need all the other services. So I'm looking forward to that. That was more than one cent, I'm sorry.
And I'm going to add, the only person I'm going to add on to that is that, that reference of, in terms of working together, when we were, when we were meeting this afternoon, one of the things I referenced is, if you look at the people in the room, most of the people in the room have been active members of this community or leaders within their departments for many, many years, from Chief Weston, Chief Dufly, you know, I'm in my 18th year as either the principal of Carver Middle High School, superintendent of the Carver Public Schools, and invested 31 years as a, as an employee in this, for the Carver Public Schools, as a teacher and coach and all those things. So I think you have a group of people who are dedicated to seeing what's in the best interest of the town, and that group of people is, they're hopefully all still going to be here next year, which I think they are, and we're looking forward to go through, going through this process.
The only other thing I would add on the revenue, one last sort of thought process, I realize that you mentioned July 1, like hitting the ground going. I would encourage us to just think about what we want to do going forward. I hear sometimes a lot of debate about adjudicating the past, what about 2020, what about 2021? And we can do it, we'll go through the data, but there's going to be a limited period of time to sort of move us forward, and from my experience, finding a path forward that everyone can agree on is the most important process ultimately.
I think going back into 2021, 22 is, I, I think it's almost a fantasy, because you look back at numbers that, because of COVID, because of everybody being locked up in their houses for so long, no school, gasoline prices were historically in the toilet, a barrel of oil was in the negative numbers. So as far as expenses and budgetary numbers went, they're not realistic numbers. So to sit back and say, you know, we only had a $15,000 gasoline budget townwide, then yeah, it's because nobody was driving anything, and the price of gasoline that we did have to buy was, you know, eight cents a gallon, so, you know, but that'll never happen again. I think looking back is, is a good idea when you want to get some historical data, but I think looking back, I'd like to see, you want to look back, look back and look at a five, six-year average. So it takes the good with the bad. But it doesn't, it just simply gives us a little tiny bit of a roadmap going forward. And then you still got to throw the fudge factor in there, because again, we don't know. You know, we didn't have any snow this year to eat up the snow budget, but we still ate up some of the snow budget, but nowhere near the snow budget. I don't think we're going to spend all the money that we budgeted, that you guys have budgeted for diesel fuel, I don't think the town's going to spend all the money they budgeted for gasoline, because that was a number that nobody knew, what's it really going to do? So we went on the cautious side of things. Chief Dufly does it with the overtime. These are things that we just don't know. So we do the very best we can, and you're absolutely right, everybody in the town all pulls in the same direction. You can go to any one of these department heads and say, listen, I'm in trouble, I need to have you cut X because I got to do this, and they say, that's fine with us. Go right ahead. Pat?
If you want to go back a little bit, I'm going to go back to the 90s.
Oh, come on, will you?
For a few.
Gasoline was 18 cents a gallon.
It's not going to, it's not going to take that long, you know, so. When, when Carver deregionalized from Plymouth, you know, you talk about, we had, we had the percentage split, and it was effective, and what it did is it prevented the infighting. Okay? So that, that's, that's something that can be revisited from time to time, you know, every year, every couple of years or whatever, but the beauty of that one was it prevented the infighting, particularly between the school department and other town services. It was set, you know, and it's just, okay, here's yours and here's yours. And it always, and it always worked. And when you talk about the cooperation between departments, that is another thing that's historical in this town. We always did it that way. And, you know, and going forward, it is, you don't, you don't have to do it that way. Back then, we all, we also had the health insurance in the school department budget. It was uncommon for that to happen, it wasn't right, it wasn't wrong, it was the way it was, because that's what happened under deregionalization, Plymouth did the same thing. And so that's how it started. And there was always talk about changing it and so forth, particularly a couple town administrators ago, whatever, I just couldn't get, get comfortable that it was going to be done right, and that's why I would never, that's why I didn't do it. But it was done right. And it's effective, and I think the, the percentage split is the way to go. And it should be validated yearly or biannually or something, and it just makes things go that much better. So, yeah, we took you 30 years and about three minutes.
You did okay.
So I, I agree with Pat, I think we need the percentage split. And I, believe me, I want both sides to be funded, I just think it's the fair way to go. And there's things that keep moving that we haven't looked at on the split, like there was an IT cost that was moved. We sat here on April 8 and asked for the revenue projection and didn't get one, so this is kind of disappointing to see that there was one. I, I would have been in the same boat as you guys and would have moved forward to do my budget, but how do you know that this budget's going to be real when we don't even have revenue?
It's a valid point, that's why when I started at the beginning, saying like, this is the sixth draft of the thing, knowing that there's lots of movement. I just want to underscore, I think because there's been a lot of transition with our executive team, I expect that as that firms up, that you'll be able to have an opportunity to have those conversations and thoughtful, long-term financial strategic planning for whatever that looks like. And, you know, as I said earlier, I'm agnostic to how we want to do the accounting, as long as there's enough money to provide for all the services. I want to, if I can, be considerate of your time and maybe double back on balancing the budget, and then through some questions, if that's okay?
Yeah, I just want to quickly, at a previous school committee meeting that I happened to watch, you talked about some layoffs, we haven't even got to that yet. There are not going to be any now, there are going to be some.
Let me get to it, I promise, a couple slides right down the road.
Then let me ask another question. You also mentioned that there was a half a million dollars-ish you were going to borrow?
Nope, but I promise I'll talk about that in these slides.
Okay.
You've got four slides, I'll cover them all.
Pat, did you have something you had your hand on?
No, I'm good.
Okay.
I'm good, thank you.
Go ahead. John?
Just wanted to say that I agreed with Pat, and that usually doesn't happen a lot, no offense to Pat, we used to go back and forth with each other way back when. But having a split is critical, but not finite, meaning, you know, we did a 10-year plan, kind of, I guess it's taken kind of the opposite side of you, Ron, saying that you have to meet the needs of the community, but you do it based on the split that's been forecast. Now, when that doesn't work, then we sit down and discuss stuff. I just think something happened in the past four years that, like you said, things are moving all over the place, it's not consistent.
That's right.
And now when we do the dust settles, when we find out what the accurate split is, then it's not going to be what we've been looking at now.
But, but now, go ahead, Beth.
No, no, I just have one other question too. Back to the health insurance before the split or after the split, was the reason it was separate because the school and the town were on different shared amounts, you know, 50, 50 percent?
No, they're all the same.
They're all the same.
Yeah, high level on your health insurance, I know we're going down a rabbit hole here business we're doing it. The bills, taking even further a step back, Carver's part of this thing called Gateway, it's a cooperative purchasing group, us, Lakeville, Rochester, work together, we're all small towns and communities, so like, we get more buying power if we all work together, all self-insured. That thing ultimately gets billed to the town, and so the administrative function, if you will, like at a very mechanical level, the amount that you spend to give insurance to your employees has a cost, that cost comes to the town, it comes out of a single account. The mechanics of the accounting, when it was accounted for in the town, town versus school, was simply that the town would say, here is the bill, and we would say, we have an account for this amount of money, and we would transfer it over to the town, and they would pay the bill, purely an accounting exercise, right? And so that's why when I say I'm agnostic to it, it really doesn't matter how you want to do it as a town, so long as however much you have for insurance, you set aside, and you say, wherever it's being funded from, give that group enough money to pay the bills to pay the bills for it. That's really it. And I would say, echo Mr. Neef said, most towns put it all together in one pot purely because it's mechanically easier. It takes away that little transfer thing. But if you feel strongly that it should be separate, that's okay too. But I'd agree, we have to come together, have a firmer plan about what that's going to look like. And I'm hopeful that with your new leadership team in the town, we'll be able to do that together. Do you want me to move on to the balancing? Okay. So this answers a lot of Mr. Jermaine's questions about how the balancing is going to work. I just want to underscore that we've probably spent the better part of a few months working with the school committee on trying to get to a place to balance it. The plan that they've developed is what I consider to be a multifaceted plan. That is, it does two things. One, it reduces your costs. So it's actually reduced down some of the expenses. I'll talk about what that looks like. It also uses some one-time revenue to help balance it. Neither is ideal. You don't want to reduce too many costs because you're reducing services. You don't want to use too much one-time funding because one-time funding goes away. It creates a fiscal cliff for you. But you do a little bit of both and it ameliorates some of the impact of either. Right? So that's the big picture financial strategy that they've employed here. What you see is, orient to your slide on the right, that first third, if you go to your slide, that's got your, slide 10, that's got that first blue box. The top is your expenses. It's your all-in expenses. You've got the accounts in front of you as well. But if you roll it all up, it's going to be about $26.5 million. That's the cost to operate your school department.
Can I ask one question on this?
Yeah.
When you calculate out your RIF, do you also include the savings for fringe benefits?
No.
Do you include anything for unemployment?
Nope. We don't on that and I'll get to that in a little bit. But that's straight salary, 153 straight salary. Your total increase though is 7.7% increase from 24. That's pretty substantial. You can see the figures there. Doing those reductions in force brings you down to seven flat. So you see on the left, what we have remaining for reductions in force are two positions. We had originally started this process with six positions to be reduced. That was hitting the bone when it comes to services across the board. This still reduces some of our services. I want to be plain with you about that. But I also appreciate as a department, we have a massive increase in costs and we have to bear that in some way. That's not easy work to be done. As we said at the outset, a budget reflects the services that provide students and the staff members that do that work. But when we're talking about balancing a budget, that is ultimately 80% staffing, one of the only ways you really can do that is to reduce the staffing. Not ideal, not a spot we want to be in. We have to make some hard choices about what that'll look like. And we have to be, have it, we have to be a fiduciary to our community as well.
You know, I think I want to mention is on the two current reductions of the kindergarten teacher and the adjustment counselor, the way that currently stands at this time is that no one would actually be losing a position. No one would be losing their job. So they are through attrition. So either retirements or other movement. So there will not be an employee who gets a reduction force notice. It would just be positions that are being, going to be vacant, that are not going to be filled.
So we have two positions going out to attrition and they're not going to be filled at this time?
That is the current plan.
And then what about like incoming kindergarteners? Will this increase their class size?
No, because the, how we're listing it here is a reduction of a kindergarten teacher who is retiring. So we have a kindergarten teacher who is going to retire. That current kindergarten class has 100 students in it. So what will happen is actually we'll have one less first grade teacher next year. So we have six teachers at each grade level at the elementary school with our average class size about 120. We have an extreme end of a class that's closer to 140. We have a small class that's 100. So that class of 100 students would have five teachers in first grade next year, which would be an average class size of about 20. It's listed as a kindergarten teacher because that's the person who's retiring who we're not replacing. Right now, our projection based on enrollment, because we're in the kindergarten registration right now, and we'll also be bringing up school choice to the school committee on the 29th and making a recommendation to maintain five school choice slots in kindergarten, is that we're going to probably enroll a typical kindergarten class of 110 to 120. That's our current projection. Ultimately, the reality on kindergarten enrollment is we generally don't get them all enrolled until August. So we, so we really can't tell you what the kindergarten number's going to be until that time. But we have to project on having six kindergarten teachers and that's our current projection.
Did I answer your question? Okay. So that's RIFs and that's your reduction in your costs. That's the first half of this sort of multifaceted approach. This next two are, you think about our additional revenues, right? So one thing I just want to underscore with the group here is that the Carver Public Schools brings in the better part of $1.7 million each year in grants. And those are a variety of grants that we write. We are very aggressive with trying to write grants because we're always thinking about, A, how can we support the things we already do? And B, how can we add new things? So for example, some of the pathways work that Mr. Neef was talking about was funded initially by a number of different grants at the state level, right? We also have some grants that offset some of our regular costs. So we have grants that offset some of these special education tuitions, those sorts of things. So we work really hard to try to bring in additional funding to offset the large costs that we've got already. In addition to that, you see some of the other lines there. We have some other typical revenue. We're calling that annual revenue. That's revenue that we expect to get each year. It comes from lots of different sources. Things like circuit breaker, preschool fees, school choice, et cetera, right? Big picture is $1.7 million is annual revenue, all in. That happens every single year. The next bucket, so in this next slide that you see, this is not annual revenue. This is the one that we need to start to get away from. The district plans to use just under $400,000 in one-time funding just to balance our budget. Not ideal. That's what we want to get away from, right? But we recognize that given this is a spike year, we should be able to see some reimbursements increasing. We're hopeful that we can start to pare back that one-time revenue. I want to state that the committee's goal is that we want to eliminate that entirely. But we know this is a tough year. So we're trying to find places to both produce expense and increase revenue. I mentioned my chapter 70. Won't go on that any further. Lastly, you just see at the bottom, this is just your tie-out. 24.2 roughly is what we had currently. You combine that with your, your total cost, 26.3. You look at your one-time revenue, annual revenue, combine that with the appropriation as of April 1, that's 26.3 as well. It's less 2.0 FTEs and that balances out your budget for FY '25. Again, this one underscore, not an ideal scenario to even be in, but I'm proud of the work that our team has done, that the school committee has done to try to find some balanced approach to balancing this budget, right? Next steps, again, still working to finalize the insurance rates. We know that's not quite done yet as of April 1. Side note, the initial insurance increase was the better part of 17%, which was massive. The impact was predominantly an increase in claims. Most of those claims were here in Carver, which is a challenge. So we've been working with Gateway on some measures to ameliorate that in general, not just for us, for Lakeville, for Rochester. House Ways and Means, I'm sure you saw their release already. Their figure is not represented in this draft. Certainly a more conservative figure would be the governor's, which is represented in this draft. This third bullet will probably change because since April 1, we've seen some of those changes. But our estimated figure as of April 1 was just under 24.2 million. We have our next meeting coming up on the 29th. Our goal will be to update the committee at that point. That's our public hearing as well and to vote an appropriation figure for you. The last two things I would just say, go back to what we talked about at the start. I appreciate the collaboration, especially with Ms. Praval, who has been incredible under a ton of pressure in a very short timeframe. Our community is fortunate to be working with someone of her caliber and we have felt fortunate being worked with her just, I think it's been four weeks as of today, yesterday, something like that. And we look forward again to just working with the new town administrator, continue to work with Karen to build a plan that's sustainable going forward, that meets our community's needs. We know that the school department certainly has the large majority of your expenses, but we hope that we do you proud with the work that we do. I thank you for your time today and I'll answer any questions I can.
I agree with you. I think that Karen has done a phenomenal job. I've met with her a couple of times and she said the other day that she feels like she's been here for five months. And I said, well, that's only because we threw you under the bus the moment you walked through the door, you know? But she's doing a terrific job. And I got to give hats off to Elaine. Elaine has been working, I think around the clock because you've sent me, you've sent me emails on Sunday. So, you know, the two of them really took this extremely seriously, realized where we were in the timeframe. And, and you're right, Beth, we haven't seen revenue and so forth and so on. But I can't blame, and I'm not going to blame anyone for it. The fact is, is that they're still finalizing like you're still finalizing. And we're told we're going to have all that on the 29th. We also have a finance committee capital outlay meeting on the 29th with Elaine and with Karen. So you guys will be up here. We'll be downstairs in the cellar. Because we actually asked of the school.
We actually planned to move our meeting to the middle high school.
Oh, you're going to go to the high school?
Yeah, we'll meet at the middle high school. Area 58 can go live from there as well.
Oh, perfect.
On record from there. We can't be on Zoom from the middle high school. It's challenging over there, but.
Yeah, but you've got that, you've got the audio center there too, right?
Yep.
We've seen, yeah. So we can have it here. Anyway, that's what's going to happen next week. So if you'd be so kind, when you get to Monday, if you just, could you just shoot me an email and, and give me what, the number you're going to present the school? So I could just report it that night. That's all.
We've talked with Karen already, talked with Elaine already and said like, listen, they'll give us the final figure. Once we get that, we'll get it in the school committee presentation. They'll see it on the 29th. We'll queue that up. Once it's voted, send it over to you all. Just kind of like queuing the ducks together to, to get this thing across the finish line.
Well, it has to because two, because the Tuesday night meeting with the select board is when we go over the warrant for the numbers. And then if you go to the, we only got till Friday.
Right.
Because then it's got to be 30 days out from town meeting.
Absolutely.
So we are at the wire this year. There's no question. Anyone else have any questions for the school? Select board members, please. John?
Either way. Can you go back to school choice for a second? You said you're looking at taking on five more students next year?
No, actually the recommendation, the school committee hasn't voted this yet. It has to be voted annually prior to June 1. It is on the agenda for the April 29th meeting. I can tell you that the recommendation will be five additional school choice slots in kindergarten and five additional slots in grades nine through 12, which would be a total of an additional 25 slots for school choice. It's what we've done probably the last four or five years. You know, we don't all, we generally don't fill those. We generally fill our kindergarten slots. So the number I'm going to present on Monday evening is that last year we opened up 25 slots and we filled an additional 13. So we filled 13 of those 25, generally mostly in kindergarten. School choice has been a real positive thing for us at the high school level, nine through 12. Because what actually, what we find is most of our school choice students in grades nine through 12 are students who have grown up and lived in Carver most of their lives. And then for whatever reason, their family has to move in high school. And then they say, can we stay? And we're like, yeah, we have this thing called school choice and you get to stay. So most of our school choice enrollment in grades nine through 12 are actually Carver residents. Not all of it, but many of them are Carver residents who've moved, but then want the opportunity to stay at the middle high school. In terms of the big picture, don't quote me on these numbers. These are estimates because I don't have the numbers in front of me. But pretty close is that we have about 70 school choice students in the district right now. And we have about eight students who are school choice out. So you can also lose on school choice. You have students, school choice into other districts who live in Carver. So in general, we're approximately about 60 students to the positive on school choice. So we have 60 students more who choose school choice into Carver than school choice out. And that number's kind of grown slowly over the last several years because every year, I think it's been a good position. So that's why I said the school, the school committee has to vote this on Monday night. If they could vote a different number, they could do something different. But the recommendation of the administration is going to be additional 25 slots. And what we've seen is that if you've actually tracked our overall school choice, we've been to the positive and it's been slowly growing, 45, 50, 55, 60. And my anticipation is it will grow a little bit more next year as well. So that was kind of a.
Okay. So, so if I remember correctly, when a child comes into school, school choice, say in kindergarten, they can travel through every grade?
They can stay the entire time. And also, that's why we have 70 students right now in school choice because they're students who, a lot of them come in Carver, come in kindergarten and stay. Their siblings are also allowed to enroll via school choice. Because once you, in essence, you accept the family when you accept someone through school choice.
But is it for, looking at the schedule right here, you've got $400,000 for money coming in from school choice and it looks like 390 going out from school choice?
No. So that, and Ron, I don't know if you want to tell us, that, that 389 is school choice. School choice money is a revolving account that can roll over. So we have an annual offset to our budget, which is estimated based on the number of students who we have enrolled through school choice. But sometimes it gets, like Ron talked about, spending increments. We have a couple of special ed students who bring in additional monies. And so that school choice account can build up and it can roll over. So we're using some of that rollover, actually using funds that we have in that revolving account to offset the budget. And Ron, I don't know if you want to say that.
That's, yeah, that's, that's spot on. Exactly it.
How much is total in that revolving account?
I don't have it in front of me, but you're probably looking at the better part of 650 right now. So this uses more than half of that ultimately. School departments typically use your school choice for unanticipated costs. So like right now, the town has the FinCom where if the police department needs something, they've got to go to FinCom for it. School departments typically can use your school choice for things like that. More often than not, Carver has used it for special education needs. So again, we have that thing called that sped increment. Kiddo gets a certain amount, smaller amount if they're not disabled. Kiddos that are disabled have those funds that are set aside for us, but they're a year in arrears. So there's like a big delay there. So we're able to use some of that delay funds in this case to cover some of those sped costs. It's good for one time. It's just not something you can hang on to long-term. Not long-term sustainability is the trouble. Yeah.
So, so getting, taking out the spike because of additional service or someone coming in. The traditional school choice student coming in, is, is that a net expense to us? Because the per pupil cost is X, but I think the reimbursement rate is somewhere between $5,000 and $8,000 based on what I'm looking at.
Yeah, it's usually a net gain for your community. And that's not true of all communities. But you know, as Mr. Neef mentioned early on, things like the pathways have attracted more students. So we have more students that are coming here than are leaving. And what happens on the cherry sheet is that nets out, right? So you'll see like school choice in, school choice out. Now, if that were the inverse, so if we had more kiddos who live in Carver who were school choice into Wareham or something, then that would be a net negative for your community. And typically in communities like that, your school committee votes to stop doing that.
Can I add a piece of text? I also think it was, not that that wasn't directly answering John's question. I'd be anticipating the question a little bit. In school choices, you have to be really thoughtful about it because you don't want to bring in too many students through school choice where it increases your costs. So we've always based our school choice enrollment and what we offer for slots that we could, that we could bring those students in with our current staffing. You know, so if I, if we said, okay, kindergarten, we're going to do 15 slots, we might really get 15 kindergarten kids in. But then we have to hire another kindergarten teacher and now it's a loss for us. So it's always gets by that fine line of you want to make sure that you can bring in, that the school choice kids you're bringing in, you can actually accommodate them through your current services by just existing staff, by just increasing class size. So in kindergarten, we typically have six kindergarten classrooms. We have five school choice slots. In theory, we're increasing each class by one kid. Right? So you, so you just have to be, you have to be careful about what you offer and making sure that it doesn't make you have to increase your staffing to support that. Because then it would become a negative for you in terms of per pupil expenditures.
Thank you.
Pat?
Yeah, I just want to just make a couple of final comments in that, in the same vein where I talked to Chief Doofly about the way that he and the, and the fire and the public, public safety and the services they provide to the town, I think in the same vein is, is the school department. The school department provides an extremely important service to the town and that's the education of the children in the town. And they, and they do a great job. And I'd also like to say that in the same, also in the same vein is that we've got experienced administration that has a track record in both building, maintaining budgets and, and as we've said before, cooperating with all other departments in the town so that everybody gets at least what they need and then we move on. So thank you for that. Thank you.
So we were thinking we should move on to capital unless there's more operating budget questions. So we have the capital that you have now and there's a few items that have been removed. Did you want to go through all items? We haven't met with you guys yet. So did you want to go with all the items and talk about?
We want to go through what you want us to go through.
I think we want to go through all the items because we haven't seen any of the school presentation yet on capital.
I can pull it, I can.
Yeah, we, we didn't bring our full capital presentation this evening because we weren't, we can do it. We can certainly do it.
Or just tell us what they're all about.
We don't have copies for everybody.
I think, I think everybody has a copy.
Well, we have this copy.
No, like the actual backup, the full presentation we made to the school committee with.
This is what we got today.
Pictures and we, we can go through the, we can go through the list.
This is good.
I'm just happy there's no 71 passenger bus. Beyond that, I'm.
The bus is. The bus is on the original capital request.
No, it's not on this copy.
I know it's on that one. I know it's on, and that is one, that's one we withdrew, that's one we pulled back.
Yeah.
So I know there's going to probably be a shortfall this year on the amount of money we have to spend for capital. So where you have this revolving account for school choice, if you had to do a capital item out of there, is that something you would ever do?
Certainly something we would consider. It's not something that we have done in the past. Because again, that's, that's balancing it off. And the reality is that school choice revolving account gives us a little flexibility to address shortfalls like this year. You know, so if we had, if last year we said, you know what? Hey, we have this amount of money in, in our school choice revolving fund. So let's buy some, do some capital projects, then we wouldn't have that $389,000, $389,000 to offset this year's budget. And we'd be reducing six more, five more positions, which we certainly don't want to do. So we have not done that traditionally. Is that something we certainly could do? Or if that revolving fund got, not that there's a number that's too high, you know, but if we felt like, hey, we're actually, in terms of school choice, we are bringing in more revenue than we anticipated, and we have the flexibility to purchase some capital items or to support some fixes that need to happen, we could certainly do that. I guess the last thing I'd say on that is we do use that fund at times to address immediate needs. So if an immediate need came up that cost us $15,000, we don't come to the finance committee and say, hey, we need this thing for $15,000. We use our school choice funds. Typically, like any extraordinary need that comes up that we're not prepared to manage, we manage through that school choice money. I don't know if you have a specific example.
What would the immediate need be?
One of the examples, so every October, right, after the year is started, we'll usually get the call from typically special education and say, hey, this kiddo needs this thing, specialized equipment, specialized transportation, was being planned to provide services here in Carver and now needs to go to a different place that costs more. Those things happen each year. Some year, very few. Some year, really significant. This year, really significant. And so our financial strategy has been rather than trying to pull something out of the history department to help this kiddo, we use these funds. As I mentioned earlier with that like sped increment, because that's a year in arrears, we consider that an opportunity to say like, the state's going to fund some of that money for some other need so we can float this for a year, a kiddo's wheelchair, a VR, whatever it might be for like an individual student need. And those typically happen mid fall to early winter on clockwork. The scale is just different each year.
And I can actually give another specific example, and one that's, has had a huge impact on the school's budget over the last couple of years, is I'm not sure if all members of the community are fully aware of our responsibilities and the issues of what's called homeless transportation or homelessness. So if a student is deemed to be homeless, but their district of origin is the Carver Public Schools, but for whatever reason, their life circumstances have made them homeless and now they're living in a shelter in Plymouth or in Taunton or in Rainham. So I'm giving examples of places we have students who are currently deemed as homeless. We are responsible to transport them back and forth to school to Carver. Now, we have a homeless transportation line item, sort of like the chief's overtime line item. You make what it's a fair estimate based on year expenses, year over year expenses. But ultimately, you don't know exactly how many students that reside, that are part of your district are going to be, end up being deemed homeless during a school year. And the reality is we have the fiscal responsibility to transport them. And transportation costs are way up because there's a lack of drivers. And there's, so there's some real premiums that have to be paid. And we have our own transportation system, but we can't necessarily meet the needs of an individual student who needs to be transported from town because they've been deemed as homeless. So that's happening through some sort of outside contracted service. And that's a variable cost from year to year. So just another, that's another example, and one that's been affecting a lot of districts. If you hear school districts talk about the impacts of homeless transportation, it's had a huge impact. And so that's another place where we, so basically that's, those are the types of things, those are the types of costs we've been covering through whatever additional monies we may have in school choice that we're not using to offset our budget. And have not directed towards capital expenses from, from lieu of like, we haven't said, okay, hey, capital, like can't afford a bus, but we have $135,000. So let's buy a bus through school choice for $135,000.
I guess the last thing I would just add to that, and again, I look forward to maybe talking more with the new town administrative team about bigger picture financial strategy, is that whatever financial strategy we have in place, because the school department operates heavily, that is, we have lots of operating costs, there has to be some mechanism to be able to have flexibility in that operating cost. This is what we use now. It doesn't have to be the thing we use now. It is what most school departments use. That's sort of the typical mechanism. But if there's a better mechanism, we'd be open to that as well.
No, I'm just wondering, because I'm thinking at some point, someone may not get funded. You know, and if it happened to be something on the school, I don't know if that would be your reserve that you would hit.
I'd add one other if I, if I just could. So one example of a capital that could pop up, if we had a student upcoming year that required a wheelchair vehicle or a wheelchair vehicles, and we needed it in a pinch, we would say, this is a place to get a wheelchair vehicle. So it's sort of like an overlap between some of these high need circumstances that pop up and a capital need that pops up as well.
So would that be the same as like the wheelchair van?
That's anticipated for the fleet. That's a fleet replacement. But this would be a situation if we had a kid move into Carver in October. I need to get them to school tomorrow. So I may be calling around to go find a used wheelchair vehicle just to get the kid going. And that would be an example of how we'd use that.
I think Alan has a question.
On this capital sheet, I guess, what is a school firewall replacement?
Do you want us to, we're going to go through the whole, I think Matt just asked us to go through the entire.
You don't have to go through the entire thing. I, I, you wanted to go through the whole thing?
None of us have seen any, so I didn't know if we wanted to.
We can, I think we could do it fairly quickly.
Oh, do quick.
And then we'll hit that question of the firewall.
Well, I also have another one that we can probably tie into this next slideshow is the parking lot repairs. And looking to see if we can kick those two cans down the road.
Get some popcorn. We're in for some capital. It's going to be great. Okay, I'll be quick. Stop me mid-conversation if you say you want me to stop.
The select board is getting bored over here.
I can tell. They're antsy. I want to go quick, I promise.
You can see when they start moving around.
I'm anticipating.
Good. Hey, I won't even go through introduction. You've got this as a file. Take a look at it. There's three buckets of capital, right? Here's your summary on facilities and equipment. I'll go through this in greater detail, I promise. And what I can do is on the way out, I'll send you a copy of this. You may already have a copy. I'll send you a copy so it's in the top of your inbox.
Yeah, that would be great.
You got it.
Thank you.
The first item is HVAC replacement materials. This is zero cost to the town. We're using ARPA funds at about $180,000 to do what's called mini splits. Essentially, we've got a bunch of classrooms interior to the middle high school that doesn't have exterior windows ultimately. These mini splits will help regulate the temperature, humidity, that sort of thing in the room. It is not new air. It recycles the existing air to a cooler temperature, bringing down temperature, bringing down total humidity. I'm going quick. Stop me if you need me to stop. On facilities and equipment, we've been doing now over the past couple of years, this modernization plan. The big picture is we've got a building that's in the mid 80s, 1997, right? The bones are great. You're going to need a new building or a major renovation in 15 to 20 years, which means you've got a full generation of students who are going to, are in kindergarten now, who will go through that school. And so our goal with this is to take some small amount of money and each year identify one department that can get some new furnitures, fixtures and equipment. Keep the bones. They're in great shape. Replace the furnitures, fixtures and equipment that's getting dated, broken down, has holes in it, that sort of thing. That's the goal with these funds. You see a parking lot here. It's $37,000. Full disclosure, that is not a whole parking lot. That is prioritized areas of the parking lot. If you've driven through the parking lot of the middle high school, need some love and attention, to do the whole thing would be a massive cost. So our goal is just to prioritize the places that need the most love and attention. I defer to my colleagues over in O and M. They're brilliant about finding the most bang for our buck in terms of bringing a group in. They do repaving some areas, repainting as needed. And we'll continue to do that over the next couple of years to try to keep the parking lot from fully collapsing. Concession stand, you'll see this on your note that we've proposed reducing this by $10,000. The rationale is twofold. One, back in 2018, you did this wonderful project to add your facility, new football field to field, that sort of thing. It didn't include a concession stand for a variety of reasons. Ultimately, the community would like one. I think it's a nice addition. We put out to bid for a couple of different vendors. Those prices were the north of 75. It included some design which you approved last year. However, we reached out to our colleagues at Old Colony. We said, hey, could we partner with you? The short answer is they were like, yes. It takes a little bit longer, but we can get it for about $65,000 all in. So we said, you know what? Rather than pushing to try to get this done next year, we'll have them build it through next year, because they're kids. So it's going to be through the school year for the following year's like football games, right? That sort of thing. A little bit longer, but saves the taxpayers a lot of money. Ultimately gets you what you need for a project that was started in 2018. Middle high school library, you'll see that on your list. That's one we've proposed to postpone to next year. The library just needs an update ultimately. This is purely furnitures, fixtures and equipments. If you've been in the library and you've sat in the seats, it's seats, it's tables, it's some new technology, it's that sort of thing.
But everything in the library is the original, probably, too, so.
Correct. Oops. This we also propose to remove and punt to next year. This is going to be phase one of two phases, FY '25 and '26. We've punted over to fully phase in '26 with the board and the town's approval. Essentially, you've got a space at the new elementary school that's, was envisioned to be this like natural play space using a hill. I think it was well intentioned by some really wonderful architects that maybe just didn't have kids at home. Kids run around a lot and they've, there's no way you can keep grass on that space. We plant the grass. If you keep kids off it, it'll look great. But it's for kids. They're supposed to be on it. So the intention there is to simply bring the berm down. It'll go up right to the, to the back line that you see there. And then we'll replace it with some swing sets because swing sets are in the highest frequency. We have a line of the swing sets at just about every event. And so it's relatively short money to better utilize that space at the elementary school. That's a nice to have, not a necessary to have. We've punted that off. That's facilities. Moving on to transportation, as you know, we own and operate our own program. You've got the details there of our program and our typical costs. We had for FY '25, a 71 passenger bus as well as a wheelchair van. We've actually reduced one of our routes right now, primarily because we've had a shortage of drivers and we have fewer kids who've been taking the bus. So with that in mind, of any of the years to not have a bus, this would be the year to do it.
My kids are affected on both of the runs.
I know. I get the complaints come to my office often. But when I think about the bigger picture to be a fiduciary for our tax base and our taxpayers, we think this is the best utilization of our funds, even though it's not the most convenient, certainly. The wheelchair van.
By all means, you should upset the vice chairman of the finance committee. By all means.
I have failed.
We have to wave at the old bus as it goes by every morning.
I'm sorry.
Still drives by the house.
That's true. We had, so we're going into a lot of detail in this, but since COVID, getting vehicles manufactured has been a challenge. And so we've made a purchase of a bus two years ago that arrived last week. So the delay on vehicles.
Still on order, right? Because we ordered one last year.
They've both arrived, both of them arrived.
Oh.
This week at the same time.
Well, so you got two brand new buses.
At the same time that we've been like holding them together.
So you're good for three or four more years.
I like your thinking. I wish that was the case. But we, it takes a while to get these. But anyway, my point is, given the reduction in routes right now, while it would be ideal to keep them up, this would be the moment to sort of pad them, hold them out for a second. The wheelchair van, between you and I, I could use three of them tomorrow. But one is sufficient. We're going to try to continue to own and operate through the town of Carver. That's the cheapest way to get our most disabled students to and from their locations. And where we don't have either a vehicle or a driver, we have to contract out. And there's a premium for that because these folks make a profit.
So if you buy another one, do you even have enough drivers?
Not yet. That's why one is all I can do. But if I could get more drivers, I'd need more vans tomorrow. Yeah.
But if we bought this one, I understand that. I'm just thinking, do you have anybody to drive it though? Or is it going to be sitting around?
We have a driver in our budget. We don't have a driver hired yet. So could it be?
Is this because we're not paying drivers enough money? Or is this because?
It's because it's hard.
They just aren't drivers. I mean, it usually whittles down to economics and how do we compare?
Economics is certainly a factor of it. We, like everything else we do in Carver, are not at the top of the scale when it comes to pay. That's true of almost, look at every comp and every sector here in our community. And that's true of not just Carver, but the southeastern Massachusetts region across the Commonwealth. So I want to acknowledge that's the case. I also though say that drivers are really hard to get in general. It's an unusual job to have. You drive, you have a break where you don't go to work, and then you come back and drive. That's a hard job description to fill. We post everywhere you can think of. You may have seen us on Facebook. We're pushing out to Facebook. You name it, we're posting for it. So side note, if you know someone who wants to drive, we will train them for free. Come see me, call me. Moving on in transportation, that's the bus we talked about. That's the wheelchair minivan. I want to talk about technology. This goes to Mr. Jermaine's comment. Again, trying to be considerate of your collective time. There are three items in FY '25 that are locally funded. There's one that's grant funded. I want to start with the grant funded, if that's okay. You have a district wide student devices. We had had a federal grant that we won three years ago for the better part of $300,000 that have offset student devices here in our community. Kudos again to Steve Mahoney, our technology department director, helped write the grant. Brilliant work there. Saves our community 300 grand. So that will be an implementation we do in '25 that cost our local taxpayers no additional funds. We have a school firewall. A little about firewall. Essentially, it's what you see there in the diagram. It makes sure bad internet traffic doesn't get to your school devices. You may have read, communities being held hostage online for all of their personal information. Schools keep a lot of that information, right? Personal information for our employees, personal information for our kiddos. This ensures that our firewall is up to date. If you want more detail on that, I'd have to defer to Stephen, have him come in and give you detail. But he gave me this wonderful diagram from my simple brain. It essentially blocks out bad actors from touching our student information.
I didn't say I didn't know what it was. I just said the $60,000 sounds like a ridiculous number to me. I'm really, I'm really growing very tired of all these IT costs that are just, these are like telephone numbers. And I don't quite understand what's driving it. I really don't. Either, either somebody's getting screwed here or somebody's not digging deep enough to find a good deal. Or somebody's in collusion to create these kinds of numbers. I know what your IT costs are. I look at our IT costs. I look at, you know, subscriptions as ridiculous numbers. We need to buy more email addresses for another $10 million. And now we're looking at this for $60,000 for a firewall upgrade. And I think this is just absolutely insanity.
I actually agree with you 100%. And I'm not a tech expert, as I sort of say off the bat. I will say in terms of going to get the best price, we do two things. One, we start with state bid lists. So state contracts where OSD has done a lot of this legwork for us to find the best prices. Wherever we can, we leverage that and we leverage E-rate. And so in some cases, E-rate's essentially a federal program that says, hey, schools, you got to buy a bunch of technology and it's crazy expensive. Here's some reimbursement, but only for really specific stuff. So for the implementation of this firewall, E-rate covers a portion of it. U covers 60, E-rate covers a portion of it. Last thing I would just say is if we find that.
You want to hear that it even costs more than $60,000?
I know. That's just the, I just want to be honest with you. Like that's the, the way it works. Hey, the last thing I would just say is if ultimately we find the OSD price is ridiculous, we'll still put these things out to bid. And it just depends on where our tech folks say, we can find a deal here and still get good quality versus we can find a deal here and you might not get what you need. Big picture, why technology costs more? I just think we're just driven by technology as a society and.
I guess I'm just confused because obviously the school's tied into Comcast, the same as the town is tied into Comcast. They're the only game in town, so they have a monopoly, monopoly on the thing. And yet, I mean, are any of those services provided by them? Why? Why aren't they stepping up and providing that kind of service? I know that we do Microsoft Exchange with the email addresses and all that stuff. But I'm assuming that our internet connection is through Comcast. Am I, am I incorrect?
No, you're correct about that. Why they don't provide that, I feel, is a regulatory decision. So I can't, we can't force them to provide it. And I would, again, act like ad. I could see.
It's nice that we let them be the only game in town and then, you know, they walk all over us. That's awesome. I love the way this works. And they do walk all over us. The technology that they've given the town is, is poor at best. Area 58 does a great job with what they have to work with. But they're working with antiquated equipment. You don't even have a decent picture on, although I don't have Comcast anymore. That went out the window a long time ago. So I'm told that the picture is better now on Channel 9 than when it was on Channels 3, when you couldn't watch it at all and you had to wait for it to come out on YouTube. It's just like, what are we doing? And we keep on, and more and more and more. I have friends of mine paying $285 a month at Comcast. I think they're crazy, but that's what they're paying. And I think that's insane. I really think it's insane. And then you start looking at these IT costs and these upgrades and so forth and so on. And you tie it all in with the town and the school. And suddenly we're paying over a million dollars a year. dollars a year, if plus, for subscriptions. And it just seems crazy to me. So, I don't know, it must be me old school. Can't we just go back to pens and paper?
I, I would just add-
An advocate.
I would just add, you know, as I mentioned in chapter seventy, I think one of the benefits here is you've got a collection of elected officials and appointed officials, and while I can't control Comcast, advocacy to regulation at a local level, at a state level, can. That's just not something I can help you with.
No, I understand. I need to yell at somebody, because that would be sitting there.
I'm always ready to yell at. Last two items of technology to be considerate of your time. These are replacement funds I mentioned. These funds are to no additional tax cost to you. We received the grant for equipment for students, and this will be the final year of that appropriation. Local funds of about forty thousand dollars for school technology at the elementary school. To your point, Alan, technology has this, like, very limited lifespan, and, you know, you've heard about planned obsolescence, right? That's the reality of a lot of technology that we all use in our day, how often you need to do upgrades to your phone. The same is true with all the technologies integrated into our buildings. So you see one for the elementary school, one for the middle high school. Ultimately, this is just replacing equipment before it fails on us, right? So like you do a replacement cycle for a lot of equipment, you do the same thing for technology. Is technology overpriced? Gosh, I think it is. Is this the way education exists in the twenty-first and going twenty-second century? It absolutely is. And so what I tell our tech folks, when we think about this, is make sure we have something that is going to be comparable for what kids need, but it's not going to be bells and whistles. Try to give them what they're going to need to use in the workforce, to use in college, to use at university, but it's not going to be the gold-plated version of that, right? We talk about the Ford versus the Cadillac in almost everything that we do.
All the kids get in Chromebooks, or does every, every student get a Chromebook?
Not every student, but a lot of the, the older students do, and that's thanks to that grant that we-
What happens when they break one?
There's a couple things that happens. One, we tell that family that you have to pay some money for whatever it is you broke, so it could be the keyboard or the screen, et cetera. We have a mechanism for that. And we also have replacement, we have insurance and those sorts of things. If it gets broken, it needs to be replaced quickly, and the family has been non-responsive to our demand letters, which happens sometimes as well. But that's what my, my office does, and we ask them very kindly to-
So when you give out a Chromebook, the family doesn't sign that they're going to take responsibility for it?
They do. They sign off on the way where it says, yes, I'm taking responsibility for this, this is the Chromebook, and if something breaks, we take care of it. But we also appreciate that families get into difficult situations, and we don't want to have a student not be able to access part of their education while we're working with the family on a payment plan, or whatever it might be.
Okay.
I know I-
I just asked, because I know it's, there's another, that's happening in other towns.
How much does one cost? How much does one Chromebook cost?
About three hundred dollars. That varies a little bit. They used to be more expensive, they're much, they're less expensive now. Hey, this is just a summary of what you saw there from Ms. Weston.
Thank you.
It shows you FY twenty-five. I've highlighted in yellow the changes. So for example, you see the concessions project was seventy-five, it's down to sixty-five. You see the library was here at one-twenty, it's been moved to FY twenty-six. You see the berm removal and swing set installation was fifty thousand here and fifty thousand in twenty-six. It moves out the whole thing to twenty-six. You see the passenger bu, seven-passenger bus has zero, it was simply cut, so not moved at all. We typically have tried to do one and two, so FY twenty-six had two on the books, FY twenty-seven has one on the books, and so on and so forth.
So if I could be the bad guy in the room again, how about if we go next year back to one bus, because you've got two brand-new ones now? So go to one, then go to, in fact, in fact, flip that whole thing, because next year you're looking for two, then one, then two, then one. Why not do one, then two, then one, then two, then, change that out, because you've got two new buses?
Could I, could I offer a proposal?
Sure.
When that would simply be that, what we do every year is we take a look at our data for mileage and usage, I work with my mechanic, and we identify if this is the right cycle, which is what we did here, and I said, hey, look, we want all my mileage, let me look at my usage. If in fact we can get away with not having one, we certainly will. My goal here on any of these things is to make sure we get what we need and not nice-to-haves. So if it's necessary to have two, I'll be in front of you saying, we have to have two, I'll happy to bring you the data for it. If we can get away with one, we certainly will. Bottom line for this and everything else we do, we want to make sure student safety's at the center of what we do. I got kids in this bus, I want to make sure they're safe, and the same is true with the equipment. I want to make sure the equipment's going to follow through with what it's designed to do.
Well, I don't want to be the bad guy. We've had this conversation before, and, and I've come up Route Three, and I've watched two of our old buses that we sold for whatever the hell we sold them for, where they scraped off the name Town of Carver, and of course, that was all the bright yellow that was underneath the labels, and the two buses were getting on at Exit Five loaded with kids. So somebody bought our buses, and then whether it was a church, or a private school, or some kid's football game, they were loaded with kids, and they were getting on the highway. So obviously, the buses were good enough to get on Route Three, so maybe they're good enough to run around the streets in Carver a little bit longer than we let them run around the streets in Carver.
Yeah, I, I would just simply say I can't speak for those organizations, other than our group, or our transportation team, does hold ourselves to a high standards for quality. So whether or not those buses break down on Route Three tomorrow, I don't know that.
Well, we don't love to have brand-new equipment. I would love a brand-new Peterbilt. I don't happen to have two hundred and twenty-five thousand bucks this week.
What I will say is our mechanic, our mechanic who's worked with our town for the better part of twenty-five years-
Yeah, I don't, I don't doubt it.
Yeah, I, I defer to him in terms of when it's time to go to a new bus, and if his stance is, listen, this bus is going to start to break down pretty regularly, my opinion is, that's a good time to let go.
Don't, don't you, don't you still have to have Ron, the registry or the state police, they, they come, they used to come in five times a year, and then, then it was down to three times a year. And that is a complete inspe, at, at our facility-
You think your safety, that has nothing to do with mechanical running.
A complete inspection that goes from, from light bulbs down to-
Ties, exhaust, brakes.
Everything. That's right. And then they say, okay, then they give it a sticker. It may not, that gets a little difficult after, you know, you've got a hundred thousand miles, and it's ten or twelve years old, and so forth. It might be good enough to do some, taking some kids to a football game or something, but, you know, to put it, to leave it on the, to leave it on the road on a daily basis, I mean, sa, safety's number one in the transportation business.
I would just say that, again, we, like every year, we use our data to say, hey, this is where we think it is going to be. If ultimately the town doesn't choose to fund it, I defer to the, you know, the local community on what that looks like, but what I try to put in front of you is need versus want for all of them.
I know, I give you a hard time over buses, I've done it for six years with Scott, he's well aware. I did it when Brad Brothers was here, too. But, you know, I run a truck that's got two-point-three million miles on it, and it hauls a hundred and five thousand pounds up and down the road on the highway all day long, every day. And it's reliable, and it runs, and it, you know, doesn't cost me a fortune to maintain.
If you want to be a bus driver, call me, I need bus drivers.
How many buses are sitting-
You don't have enough money in your budget.
How many buses are sitting in the bus barn because we're short drivers?
None. We have, we have sufficient number of drivers for the CDLs right now, that's the big yellow buses. What we could use more of, in particular, actually, is our seventy, the minivans, the vans, the wheelchair vehicles that bring kiddos who might be homeless or special-
I think the right question is, how many buses do we own, and how many routes do we run?
Like, there's got to be, I know there's a shortage of bus drivers, so there's got to be some buses that are going out.
We typically keep two spares in the bus barn. And those, what we do is we, we cycle through our oldest buses to be the spares, so that they're not out every single day, and we try to keep our newer buses doing the regular ones.
But if the buses were, the routes were combined together, there's got to be an extra bus somewhere.
That's one of our spares.
So normally you have one spare, not two?
We have one spare right now, we're about to have two spares.
And are the buses full every day?
They are now. They're especially full right now. If your kiddo's on a bus, your, her bus is full.
My daughter falls off every day when they take a turn.
It's full.
Oh.
Yeah. Ideal world, could we hire another driver and have another bus? Absolutely. But to your point, collectively, we're in a difficult budget cycle, we're trying to find ways to be efficient, and try to balance the idea of be safe for our kiddos, get them to and from school safely, and do in a way that maximizes the taxpayers' funding.
So I guess the only other question I'm going to have then, if, if I may, a hundred and thirty-five thousand bucks for a bus, it wasn't that long ago, they were eighty-seven thousand dollars. So, and they're just going to go from there, they're going to keep going up, and then we can't get them, and then there's delays still, and this is the new, this is the new manufacturing cycle that we're in. I don't think that, there's not going to be any stocking of parts, it's all going to be just-in-time deliveries and so forth and so on, because it's the economically smart thing to do for any manufacturer. How often, and when was the last time the school looked into subbing out the entire transportation to, like, first student or whoever else does it?
Two years ago. And what I do each year is I poll all the school business managers who do my job in other districts who already do that work, and I can tell you off the cuff, you're looking at a fifty percent increase right now for some of these contracts. And so I would, and-
But I'm assuming they'd buy the, the rolling stock, and they'd take the drivers, and they'd take the, they'd take the drivers and the workman's comp and the health insurance, and all we'd do is write a check?
Yes, and I would say, I'm happy to follow up and do some more analysis with the latest numbers. In my previous experience, including the work that you and I did just a few years ago, owning and operating locally saves your taxpayers a substantial amount of money.
It's always been, always been that way.
And I would just, I would just-
Well, but I still remember a five hundred dollar per day per bus cost to the town a couple of years ago.
And I would just add, I would just add, your trend right now on the contracts has spiked pretty dramatically.
I was going to say, is one of the biggest drivers that superintendent's talking about right now is their out-of-district, is their, not out-of-district, is their busing costs that they're contracting out. So generally, people are very envious when I say that we maintain and control our own busing. But again, we, I, in terms of this budget cycle, it's not realistic for us to look at outsourcing our busing, but are, are looking at doing that comparative cost analysis. Ron said he did it like two years ago, something we could certainly do again next year.
If it's the most advantageous to contract out, we should do that. I'm just telling you my professional opinion, it is not right now.
And I think the kids love their bus driver.
We're going to get that whole conversation of, almost all bus drivers live in the community, and there's a whole other component to this.
I get that.
Something we've talked about many times.
But you, you talked about, you talked to, I, I've talked to towns that do contract it out, and they say that they've done the same analysis, and they can't own them for the price they pay.
Because they don't own them. They can't start over. They, they can't start over. If they could, they would. So I've had this conversation with many superintendents, that if I could go buy, I just don't have, I don't have the ability. Our community doesn't have the ability to go buy fifteen buses, if, or twenty buses all at once. If I could, I'd do it in a heartbeat.
Oh, okay, all right.
Oh, yeah. But it's just, well, what have we came to? By the way, we need to buy twenty buses. You'd be saying, no, you can't do that.
That would make sense.
Last thing I'll just say on buses before we move on to other topics, it's easy to get out of that, but you're not getting back in.
You can't get back in.
So you better be sure, once you pull that trigger, you're never going back. And my professional opinion, you save money, it's a better service owning and operating currently. I'm happy to do the analysis going forward, as we do every couple of years, using the existing data, without a question, it's better.
I also would believe we'd have much more control over keeping it in-house anyway, so. I'm not trying to be that guy, I just wanted to know, have you done that, have you done that, that, that analysis, that's all.
I'd rather see the bus drivers make a few dollars more an hour than go out of source, you know, and keep it in-house.
All right, we're sorry.
Yeah, that's the ten thousand.
And the only thing I was going to add in terms of the, the items we pulled back, we had some anticipation that capital may not have the funds to cover all the capital requests. So we had this discussion, presented this list of things we would possibly pull back with the school community at our last meeting. They approved the four items that we did pull back, and as was previously stated, over the last week or so, we've had collaborative meetings with fire and police in the MS and ONM, and, and the finance director, and the town administrator, you know, current acting town administrator, and this is the list we've come up with, that we all support. And so we support those items being pulled back at this time, while also supporting the other requests that the other town departments are putting forward. So I, I, from my perspective, what's being presented to is a coll, a list that's collaborative, supported by the department heads. Not that I can speak for all of them, but we, that's what we've been doing over the last few weeks.
One other thing to add, I know we're, we're over on time. We talked about this at the, the conversation for budget, this idea of looking forward and trying to work with the new town administrator and the new finance director about just a longer-term financial strategic plan for our community, and I feel like capital is a big component in that as well. You know, you see here, what I do with, each year, we sit down with our school department team, and we plan out ten years of like, what are the stuff that we're going to need? It's not perfect, ten years from now, lots of things can change, but it's, you know, it gives us a roadmap. And anyway, my point is, I'm just looking forward to working with that new town administrative team as well, to say like, is this the path we want to take? Is there a pivot they want to make, so that we're all on the same page about what that process can look like? This way, we're not in a spot each year going, oh, jeez, I got to drop X, Y, and Z. If we know what our capacity might be and what our vision is, we can plan for that in advance. You know, just, I'll flag one as just an example, FY twenty-nine, you're going to need some work, significant work than on your field project, on your field space, right? That turf space. It's a big dollar amount, right? It's a rough estimate. I had a vendor come in and just put an eyeball on it for me, and say like, what would it cost a few years out? No bids yet. My point is, we're trying to plan for that, saying, in FY twenty-nine, I've moved everything around, so that the only thing we're thinking about is this big cost, but even that big cost is really substantial, right? And so I'm just looking forward to be able to work with our new administrative team to talk about, like, is this the right strategy? Is that the right year? Is there a different strategy you want to use? Do you want to break that up? Do you want to bond it? All those conversations, I think, will help us get to this comprehensive financial strategy strategy as a community, including the schools, but not, you know, exclusive or just one case. Anyway, and also-
I also think that in conversations with Karen, I think you've had them too, she's a big proponent of 10 years. I've heard conversations where she would even like to see us go out 20 years, even though it's pie in the sky at that point. But for this very reason. Because there are things that are going to happen eight or 10, nine years from now, that if we're only going out five years, becomes a shock when we finally get to that fourth year in this plan, and now we're out that ninth year, and oh, where'd this number come from? So I, I really think that the longer we go out, and look, 10 years is a good number. The longer we go out to look, the better off it is. Again, we go back to sustainability. It gives us an idea of where we're at. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Can I ask a question about this concession stand?
Oh, yeah.
Do we currently already have a, a stand?
We do not.
Nothing.
It's a little, no. So what the, the sports groups use is they put out like, folding tables and an umbrella. I will say, when we, when the project was in 2018, they roughed in some of the utilities for a concession stand, and there's a footprint for it. So it's ready to go, which is helpful because Old Colony has only certain trades ultimately. We're going to work with Old Colony. We also have New Bedford Vogu's going to work with us. We're going to sort of cobble together a coalition to make this happen. My point being, the town had great forethought to rough in all of that utility. We just need them to build the space and connect to the utility.
And I don't know how all of that works, but is this something like the boosters could raise money for?
We've been engaging with the boosters on this. I don't, in my conversation with the boosters, I don't want to speak to them, speak for them. They haven't had funding to that level, to that capacity. That said, one of the conversations we've had is, we're going to build you the shell. You all have to get the stuff in it. So the, whatever they're getting, pretzel thing, fridge, whatever you need for a concession, they're going to do that bit of it. And that's their contribution to the larger community.
So they're building it out of wood?
Yes.
Will it include facilities?
It will, it will not. It will not. There's some regulatory triggers that occur when you start to add permanent bathroom facilities. Long story short, Carver doesn't have the financial capacity to handle all of those, so we'll still have the porta potties. Good questions. Other questions? Capital?
Yes. I was hoping to have this for capital, meaning he's asked for it a couple of months ago, and that was a listing of all of the 2024 ATM articles and prior that still have open balances in them. I don't know if you have any. I, I thought there was a technology ATM sitting there, and I just don't know if you can, if you have an update.
I do. I would defer to Ms. Preville. I've sent her all of our data. My understanding is that she and interim, oh, I said, she and interim TA Weston were presenting the comprehensive list, including the school department balances.
Sure.
Join us Monday night.
We'll see.
Any others?
Thank you, guys.
I know we went wrong. Thank you.
Look, you guys are off the hook.
Thank you, guys. Thanks for your time today.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Only a couple more minutes. Does the select board, you want to stay with us till the end? We're already doing minutes.
Or we can go.
We can go? Okay. I guess we'll go. I'll, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
To adjourn.
All in favor?
Aye.
We are adjourned.
Would the cap, the capital outweigh like to make a motion to adjourn?
Thank you, Dan.
Motion made in second. All those in favor? Okay. Have a great night, guys.
I'm taking it very personal. I want you to know that. John can't go in. Oh, yeah, you are leaving.
He's gone.
You're off the hook too. All right, good. Once they're out of the room, we can talk about it.
Okay. The minutes?
Minutes. I'll take a motion. I sent them all out, and then you all have a copy.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes as written from April 8, 2024.
Second?
I have a motion and a second to accept the minutes as presented from April 8, 2024. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Minutes are set. Five, zero. Real quick, our next meeting is on the 25th, this Thursday. It's going to be a review for IT planning, veterans, and recreation. I will get the agenda out tomorrow. Ashley, is that possible for you?
Thursday?
Yes. And then again, next Monday? And then you don't have to Tuesday, because that's the joint meeting with the select board. So next, also on Monday, we have the final budget review with the TA and the finance director. And I also go to include, we have a pending grant application from Shane Gibbs Thanks. I'm going to put that on that Monday agenda. And that will be that.
So are we keeping that grant program?
We're keeping $10,000 in FY25. We're keep, yeah, we have a $10,000 grant program. Shane Gibbs Thanks grant application, this will be for July. So, but yes, we're going to maintain $10,000 instead of the $25,000 that we gave back $15,000 this year.
So are we going to see a revenue projection that shows us that?
From your mouth to God's ears, I sincerely hope so. I've been promised everything we need on Tuesday, on Monday night. And Karen couldn't make it tonight because there was a death in the family, and she's actually had to wake in a funeral. So that's why she's not here tonight. Otherwise, she would have been in the room also. And this is where we're at. So it's going to be the same thing on, on Thursday. It's going to be IT planning, veterans, recreation. We're going to treat it in the same way we've done tonight. And